Ready to go? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting. Thank you to all the members of the public, or both the members of the public, and one very young member of the public who is very welcome. Thank you to all the members of the public, councillors and officers who are joining us for today's meeting. Please be aware that the council is video recording this meeting and this will be uploaded to our YouTube channel. If councillors have any concerns about hearing or seeing others in the meeting, please let the chair or council officer know straight away. If anyone uses hearing aids, please make sure to connect to the hearing loop for the best quality audio. Must also run through a few health and safety points for those physically in this room. We require that face masks are worn at all times except when you are speaking at the microphone or have a medical exemption. The far exits are via the main entrance you enter the venue through or the disabled access entry point. The assembly point is out on West Down Road, which is to the east of the building. Please remain seated unless you're invited to speak or need to take a comfort break. The toilet facilities are by the main entrance doors. If the meeting goes into confidential session, a short two-minute break will be held to allow members of the public to leave. Now, we have some members of the public with us, so members of the public are invited to participate in the meeting with the following key points. You will be invited to speak during the public participation agenda item. Please raise your hand to show you wish to speak and the chair will invite you to come to the microphone in the order you've indicated. Public participation is limited to a maximum of four minutes per person, must be relating to an item on the business of the agenda. You do not need to speak—try again—you do not need to state your name when you start speaking if you do not wish to, but we will ask that you clearly state which agenda item you are speaking about. I would ask that participants looking to leave the meeting wait until the end of an agenda item in order to limit distractions for other participants. To all present, please remember to show respect to others in the meeting and avoid interrupting wherever possible to enable others to follow the meeting. If any councillor feels concerned about any aspect of the meeting or discussion, please clearly state point of order and the chair will then gesture for you to elaborate. If anyone present is felt to be behaving unacceptably, they can be ejected from the meeting by resolution. Thank you for listening. On behalf of the council, I would like to thank everyone for attending this town council meeting. And also in terms of our time scale, we have a long agenda, which means we must absolutely finish before ten—at or before 10 o'clock. And I sincerely hope it'll be before 10 o'clock. And we will take a comfort break at nine o'clock if we're still going at nine o'clock or look to have some agenda items to follow from that point of the meeting. So we go to the agenda itself now. These agendas and all the reports have been circulated. Agenda item one, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for absence are councillor Dunn, who's unwell, councillor Lord, who has a prior commitment, and councillor Everdon, who's unwell. Thank you.
I should say at this point, we're particularly pleased that councillor Cash is with us. Good to have the deputy here in the chamber. We move on to item two, disclosure of interests, which is to deal with any disclosure by members of any disclosable pecuniary interests and interests other than pecuniary interests as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and the Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. Are there any disclosures? Councillor Adenagie, for a microphone, please.
It's a non— it's a non— I can't pronounce it—non peculiar interest. I am an associate member of the Seaford Community Partnership, agenda item number twenty.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else signalling, so that was the one disclosure. Now we move to item three, which is public participation to deal with any questions or brief representations from members of the public in accordance with relevant legislation and Seaford Town Council policy. If anyone would like to speak, would they please indicate? I see Keith—only Keith, would you like to come to a microphone, please? And if you please tell us which item on the agenda you're speaking about.
Yes, I'd like to speak to item twenty on page 197 of tonight's short agenda. Firstly, there are two parts in that paper. The memorandum of understanding between the town council and the Seaford Community Partnership. Nothing radical. It basically formalises what has developed over the years in working together. And I think the partnership needs to work a little bit harder at communicating with the responsible finance officer, Karen, so that we're fully aware of one another's views. Secondly, I'd like to refer to the climate change projects, the six climate change projects that we've got. I think—I hope you think they are sensible, not radical, and we can implement them if we can get the money. There's a minimal impact on Seaford Town Council's staffing resources. And we are trying to address climate change, but also the proposals that we're putting forward are certainly compatible with the local economy, improving the local economy, encouraging businesses in the town centre, and so on. So often you think these things are incompatible, but the proposals we're putting forward are not incompatible. We're attracting people to the town, we're encouraging people to stay in the town centre if we possibly can. That's what we're trying to do. So therefore, I would argue that the proposals are a win-win. It's not just climate change, it's other aspects of the town as well. The figures in the report are already out of date, as we expect them to be. We work very closely with the National Park Trust people, who have some very knowledgeable people who are experts on funding, funding from the National Lottery, as well as funding from other sources. For example, of other sources, we've been given some good contacts at Lewish District Council for the possibility—we're about to express an interest—in seeking some money from the community pot of the Community Infrastructure Levy, which is LDC's bit of it. And you'll also see that we're inviting sponsorship in order to help pay for the proposals we're putting forward, and sponsorship from the public, as well as sponsorship from companies. For example, we're seeing Southern Water next week, having been introduced to the right person by the policy person at the National Park. And final piece of good news, with sponsorship, the National Park have some special software to help deal with such, and they'll be putting forward for a part of the job of a member of staff to administer the sponsorship for us. So we're not calling upon Seaford Town Council to spend a lot of time doing that for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your input. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak from the public? No, I think we can move on to item four. The approving the minutes of various meetings. Full council, four point one, someone like to propose that be accepted? Geoff, seconded by Bill, all those in favour? Yes. Community services, I think Olivia, you'll move that, but there's also a recommendation that needs to be put to this meeting and more papers that are in the— that are attached under this item. So Olivia, do you want to propose they be accepted and indicate the— what's there is the events policy, which was a republished paper with some slight updates in—yes?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I would like to propose the agenda. The draft minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that means we will also be accepting draft events policy that was in pages nine to nineteen, but it's been updated now with a new one to eleven with that covering report. So accepting these minutes, we also accept that paper. So those in favour? Okay, that's carried. Now we've got a four point three, councillor Brown—sorry, councillor Brown. Two meetings of finance and general purposes and two recommendations, I think.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Propose we accept both the minutes as a true record. Thank you.
Yeah, just to say that both are—there are recommendations that are addressed within agenda item eleven. So someone seconded councillor Brown? Okay, councillor Hyder, sorry. Those in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Now on to Gulf and the View, councillor Argent, would you like to propose these? Mr Argent, you propose these as accurate record? Yes? Okay, someone seconded that? Councillor Payne, those in favour? That looks carried. Those—councillor—personnel, councillor Edson, there he is over there. Do you propose these? Someone seconded that? He's proposed it, it's seconded, yes, it's seconded by councillor Warraven. All those in favour? That's carried. And now we come into one, two, three, four, five sets of planning and highways minutes. Councillor Warraven.
I propose we take all five as read. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Someone seconded that? Councillor Payne, all those in favour? Thank you. That takes us to item five on the report—the on the agenda, mayor's report. Given the length of this agenda, I simply propose to say to you, you had the report in advance, hopefully you've read it, if you need to talk about it, do come to me afterwards. I propose it be noted on that basis. Someone seconded that? Right, councillor Cash, all those in favour? Okay, that's item five. Item six, good to have Joe with us tonight. Would you like to come to the microphone, please? Joe Lacy, our young mayor.
Since the last council meeting, I have organised an event which was held at Seaford School, where my goal was to raise awareness for my chosen charity, Defiant Sport. Although there weren't the numbers I hoped for, I enjoy seeing members of our community engage with the charity and have fun. I went to Remembrance Sunday, where I had the great honour of laying a wreath at the war memorial to remember those who have and are fighting for our country. Before Christmas, I had a saul at Seaford Magic and raised over £100 for Defiant Sport. I also went to the mayor's Christmas carol. It was a shame that all the primary school choirs could perform live, but the two we heard were fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know that Joe will be happy to take questions, but by email after the meeting. So thank you, Joe, it's good to have you here with us, so we receive and accept that report. Let's move along then to item seven. I don't think there are any town council working groups to report, is that correct? No town council working groups? Sorry? Oh, councillor Warren, you have a hand up, sorry.
Sorry, I know it's a long meeting, but the AGM for McCreed Youth Centre was only last night, so I wasn't able to put a report in previously. Obviously, they're getting back on track to where they were pre-COVID, but their treasurer has stepped down—or will be stepping down after the end of year, at the end of March. So if anyone knows an accountant that is happy to do on a voluntary basis their accounts, please let me know or McCreed Youth Centre, they'd be very grateful for that.
Okay, thank you. So that's—so in terms of—are there any— I think there are no working group reports. That was the first of the outside body representative reports. Does anyone else have an outside body representative report to present? Don't see anybody. No? No hands up? Okay, let's move on. Are there any district or county councillors here who wish to address the meeting? I think councillor—oh, you just—be careful about going to auctions in that case, you never know what you'd go home with. Okay, so that moves us on now to—yes, we've gone to item ten now. We're now moving to the town clerk's report, so Adam McCross to you.
Thank you, councillor Reed and Chair. Good evening, everyone. Great to see you all. Thank you all for giving up your Wednesday evenings to be at the meeting. It seemed great to see so many people here this evening. Just to say, I have circulated this report well in advance of the meeting, so I hope you've all had a good chance to look at it. It's followed my policy since I began, which is to do all I can to make sure councillors and the people of Seaford have all the information we can appropriately give them about what we're doing, and this report aims to do that. So I hope you've had a chance to look at the report. I'm very happy to take any questions or comments people have now before we note the report. Thank you.
So anyone want to ask a question about the report, councillor Meek? You could go to that microphone sooner rather than later, it'll save some time. Councillor Meek?
Thank you for the report, town clerk. It's very extensive and covers pretty much everything, I think, which is good. I just wanted to say—you say in your report that the CCWP, the Climate Change Working Party, has been meeting regularly. We haven't been meeting very regularly, I have to say, and it's been rather an abeyance whilst we find out what our remit is. I'm hoping that before May, we will maybe get some kind of policy document in place, but we've got to work quite quickly and I think we need to reconvene and talk about that. But that's just to say, we haven't been meeting as regularly as we might have been. The only other point I wanted to raise was green spaces—the green spaces that Seaford Town Council are wanting to let the public manage. I do feel that it's a very slow process at the moment to get certainly the first of these agreements in place. And I would like to see that go through a bit quicker if it's possible. And once you've got a kind of format in place, if it could be rolled out when other groups take it forward, because I think any stalling of this process is going to disincentivise people. And so I just wanted to make sure that we all agree that it needs to roll out if we can fairly— I understand the problems that Seaford Town Council has to protect itself, but on the other hand, we mustn't, you know, discourage people. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Meek. Those points are definitely noted. I think with regards to the agreements, I completely take your point, we don't want to hold things up. I think we—the nature of what we're trying to do requires us to be quite careful about how we approach the agreements because of the nature of the commitments that both parties are taking on, really. So we've just found that, unsurprisingly perhaps, you know, that there's quite a lot to figure out actually with the community groups, so we're able to draw up and finalise the agreement. So these things just have taken time to do as part of a process. But I think, you know, but, you know, we are progressing. And also, as you say, the good thing about making progress is that we're not having to go to blank sheet of paper when we're having the discussions. We've got templates to draw on or things that we can be, you know, have developed as models that are used for further discussions. But it really is about making sure that everybody's fully happy and fully understanding so that then everything can be signed off. And that's just a process that does take some time. So yes, I understand that the progress may not be as quick as we'd hoped, but that's why it's taken so long. Thank you.
So any other—councillor Honeyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A question on page thirty-one about the parking. It says, D, that we will get a pay for parking next steps as agreed to October for council, and this word is now being taken forward. I've been asked by residents when they will get an update, because residents—I've had people in contact, especially about people for access issues and for disabled parking base. They were wanting to know when they're going to get an update on that.
Okay, no, that's fine. We'll—in terms of the request for the additional disabled parking, that was put through planning and highways, so we'll make sure the report comes, the planning and highways from the outcome of the request for additional parking that we've made. And obviously, we'll do that as soon as we can. With regards to parking more generally, yes, we've been working very hard to look at, see what the steps that need to be taken for the issues to be considered most effectively. We anticipate bringing a paper about that to either the relevant committee or the next full council meeting to start that process moving forward.
Anyone else with questions or comments, the town clerk? No, I think that's it. So the recommendation tonight is we note—the recommendation tonight is we note the contents of the report. Someone like to propose that? Councillor Brown, someone seconded that? Councillor Rutland, those in favour? That's carried, thank you. Now, for those of you who think we're rushing to get to this point, you're correct, we are. But now we've got some time, so I wanted to have enough time to go through the next— so I won't—I promise to breathe in between items now, so we will slow down a bit. Now, agenda item eleven. Now, I thought carefully about the process for this agenda item and also consulted with officers about this. So what I intend that we do, and the process we'll follow, is that as I usually do, I'll invite Karen as the officer responsible for the budget— or responsible for the report to present it. And then as chair, I will propose the budget motion recommended by FNGP. If I find a seconder, we'll have a motion, but we won't put that to the vote. Then there'll be a full discussion or debate between the councillors of the budget as presented. Then, following that discussion, we'll have amendments that will be proposed, and if they're seconded, they'll be put to the meeting for voting. If there is more than one—if any of those amendments are carried, or several are carried, one of those amendments will then become the substantive motion replacing the original motion. So we won't go to vote when I propose the full budget, but it'll be there, proposed and seconded. There'll be discussion. Then there'll be an opportunity for everyone in the room to have the discussion. Then we'll look for amendments from the room to that proposal. Then when we've got all the amendments out, we'll then go through them for votes. And then if some or all of those amendments become—the—if you like, overtake the motion that will be proposed at the beginning, they then become the substantive motion, and that's what would set the budget. So we will work our way through this, but it's just meant to be a careful process, that our officers have a fighting chance of minoting and also the opportunity for everybody to have a fair say at this. The—so I'll now invite Karen as the RFO to present the budget, and then we will take—then we'll go through the—what I've just talked about, in the order I've talked about it. So Karen, as our first presenter of the report, please.
Thank you, Chair. The first thing that I would like to explain to you is that since writing the report, Lewish District Council have confirmed reduced costs for the council tax leaflet that's sent out every year. So looking at this budget, officers feel that the advertising and publicity budget could be half to £750. This takes the revised draft increase in band D down to 9.49%, or £9.87 per annum. This is nineteen p per week. And bear in mind that Seaford Town Council's share of the total council tax bill that residents receive is less than five percent. The FNGP committee recommend this budget to you in its current form. However, since the meeting of FNGP, there's been a few changes which I would like to bring to your attention. New costings have been included for the renaturing approved by Community Services Committee, and that's a saving of about £8,000. The band D base was unknown at the time of the meeting, and now we've got the final figure, it means it's been reduced. And that means that keeping the precept the same would result in an increase in band D of 0.59% or sixty-two p. That's without us changing the precept at all. Also, £160 has been included for winter bedding on the boat in the town, but this is paid for by sponsorship. So those changes have slightly altered the recommendation that FNGP made. Looking at potential reductions in terms of would like to have or would need to have, could put things into perspective for you. Should members decide to defer any of the budgets until next year, then you must be aware that any reduction of the 2022-23 budget will have an equivalent addition in the following year's budget, increasing it. Cutting maintenance and replacement budgets is possible, but I would strongly advise against it, as if the repair or the replacement becomes urgent, then the money will have to be spent anyway without a budget. This will mean that reducing the general reserve and increasing the precept again the following year. When income is uncertain and the general reserve is insufficient to take the risk, income budgets must be set prudently. Otherwise, any loss of income would decrease the general reserve, meaning that, again, we would have to budget our precept even more in the following year. The current year's budget and the 2022-23 budget has been set in this basis to ensure that the general reserves will be well protected. None of us want to be in the situation that we were in last year, when we had to stall loan payments, we had to go to the districts and county councils and ask them if they would lend us money if we needed it. We are in a far more stable position financially than we were last year, a general reserve of £312,000 compared to £184,000, but we're not out of the woods yet. This is nowhere near sufficient to stand the fluctuations in income that we've seen over the last two years. With sound budgeting and transferring budgeted sums to the general reserve each year until we reach the agreed target of fifty percent of precept, we have the potential to reduce the amount budgeted for the general reserve and attain robust reserves by 2023-24. Some members have questioned reducing this sum this year, but I would strongly advise against reversing the decision taken last year, which I recommended and was endorsed by the auditor as good corporate governance. Appendix three to this report has been printed and everyone should have a hard copy on the table to enable them to write things down during the discussions and try to keep track of the amounts that we discuss. We will also try to do the same, but please bear with us, we're totting them up. I'll briefly go through the list. If my computer's turned off. Just a minute. But one thing I would also like to say before we go through the list, just as a starting place, I'd like to mention the equipment required at the View. All other items in appendix three are considered for budget reductions, but the equipment at the View is actually needed, so the budget can't be removed, but the expenditure can be met from the vehicles and equipment EMAC reserve rather than the precept. This would reduce the precept by £8,700. The revised band D that you need to consider then would be eight point six percent increase, or £8.94. So if you look at the list in appendix three, the first item—I will take questions if anybody wants to ask anything after this. The first item, civic otheries regarding— The first item, civic otheries regarding the mayor's chain. FNGP asked for an amount to be included for a collar, a box and refurbishment of the mayor's chain. And for that purpose, we put in a sum of five thousand pounds. We didn't really know how much it was going to be. We have had now a quotation. The collar and the box is less than a thousand pounds together and the refurbishment, the quote says a thousand pounds, but they haven't seen it, it could be more. So the option there would be to keep none of the budget, save five thousand pounds, you could keep a thousand pounds and buy a collar and a box, you could keep two thousand pounds and hopefully that would be sufficient for the refurbishment. I hope you understand that's clear. The next one on the list is election costs. This cost is not going away. It's something that we have to do, it's something that we have to pay and it's something that occurs every four years, as you all know. If we only budgeted for it every four years, that particular year would see a heck of a, a four percent rise in the, in the precept. That's not what we want and that's why we budget it across four years. Of course, it's not going to be needed, hopefully unless there's a by-election next year, it's not going to be needed. So you could put it forward, you could take it out of that year's budget and you could put it forward to the next year, but the next year it would be twenty percent. So while making those decisions, that's something that you need to be mindful of. I'm not going to talk about the grants, I think that's something that's for members to decide. Mayor's expenses, the mayor's allowance, it's never been more than a thousand pounds spent since nineteen, twenty-seven, twenty seventeen, I think it is. So that could safely be reduced to a thousand pounds, should you think that that would be sufficient for an incoming mayor. On to see our Community Services Committee. The first one is twenty thousand pounds is already in the budget for replacement of the seafront bins. This is something that's been needing doing for a few years now. We have found that rather than replace them, we could actually have them refurbished for five thousand pounds. So that could be reduced by fifteen. The salt CCTV work was, was put back a year last year and so to put it back another year wouldn't really be in the, in its best interest. The rainbow bench, we could try and get a sponsor for that if it wasn't in the budget. The water refill station is quite expensive, it's a lot more expensive than the other ones that we've done. This is mainly because the road needs digging up. It's fifteen thousand pounds. Again, if members thought that that wasn't a project that you wanted to do this year, it could be done next year or it could be deferred until we had enough SIL to do the work. One thing that does need to be borne in mind, if some of these projects, you think, oh well, we could not have the project and, you know, we, we could try and apply for SIL for it or another grant or something, most people these days, unless you've got some money in the budget for it, they won't give you a grant, they want to match fund. So a fifteen pound, fifteen thousand pound project, we'd need seven and a half thousand pounds in there to be able to get the other seven and a half thousand to fund it. Project expenditure, three thousand pounds for, to engage a professional fundraiser. I don't think there's anything more really I can say about that. Signage for Cookmere Haven, again, that's something that could fall out, may be able to use SIL. Martello field fencing replacement, it's, it's very expensive and we have split it over a period of four years and hope that it will manage to last that long if we do some of it, the worst parts of it the first year. Again, this is like I was talking about earlier, it's a repair and replacement. As you've seen already this year, we had some fans going on the seafront. It needed doing, it's a health and safety matter, we didn't have the budget. Luckily, we did have an earmarked reserve that we earmarked at the end of last year from surpluses, so it hasn't hit the general reserve. But if we don't budget for this this year, and we do need to do it, we won't have the funds for it, it will have to come from the general reserve. So it's just something to, it's just something to consider when you're looking at the different budgets as to which you'd like to reduce. South Hill Barn, there's ten thousand pounds in the, in the budget there. Five thousand pounds is to actually, for any building maintenance and works that need to make it safe and secure for us to be able to have events. There's also five thousand pounds for a professional to develop the plan for the South Hill Barn further. Martello toilets, this is, this is just the amount that we've put in there in case we needed to get a loan. If we did need to get a loan, we would have to have this sum in the budget for the government to consider it. So if it's considered that we wouldn't ever get a loan or we'd wait another year if that was the only option, then again, that could be removed. When looking at the budgets, I was actually quite surprised that we have two playgrounds. We don't have any replacement programme, we don't have any budgets set up for when they need and to the best of my knowledge, all playgrounds need a full refurbishment or a full replacement every so many years, but we don't have anything at all for that and it's expensive. Fifty, hundred thousand pounds wouldn't be considered a small amount, it's a large amount, but it's going to be at least that much money and that's just sort of a figure off the top of my head. So this year, we put in the budgets, we separated the playground budgets out. Normally it's in maintenance, grounds maintenance. We did that for the reason that we could earmark any underspends every year, they were itemized, especially for playgrounds. We've also put a sum in there to build up for future, to replace a new playground. To build up at five thousand pounds a year is going to take a lot of years. Sorry, yeah. Would you like me to go back to the, still the playgrounds, Chair?
Yes.
Yes, so. Yeah. So I was surprised that we haven't got anything in our budgets, in our earmarked reserves for replacement of the playgrounds, which are notoriously expensive. So this year, we've separated the budgets out for the playgrounds. Normally, any playground maintenance or replacement parts are met from the grounds maintenance budget, but going forward, they'll have their own budget so that we know what's spent on them and then at the end of the year, we can earmark any surpluses, which will go with the budgeted amounts to be able to have a replacement programme so that in a number of years, when they need replacing or a big piece of equipment needs, needs replacing, we'll have the money. They are in there, they're not going to be spent next, they're unlikely to be spent next year, so they're in there for that purpose and that's why they're contained in this list. Again, not, not really I'd something I would recommend taking out as corporate governance because, to be honest, they should be higher than that figure. That, that's just a start. Onto the Gulf and View. The Gulf and View, as I mentioned earlier, the first three items, equipment purchases, are, are needed, so they can't be changed, they need to be there in the budget, otherwise we're not going to be able to operate the view. But what they can do is they can come from earmarked reserves, so they don't decrease the budget, but they do decrease the precept. The fourth item on there is staffing at the view. Especially because of Covid, we've found a situation that is very, very hard to get casual staff. So the reason that's in there is to try, if we had a permanent member of staff, we would definitely be fully covered. Of course, we can still use casual staff, it would make a saving of seven thousand pounds a year. That's mainly to do with the pension requirements. So that is something that could, could drop out if need be, but the reasons that we think that it's a good thing to have is because we've got problems getting staff and I'm sure that members will appreciate that it's all over the news that in the hospitality sector, that sort of hospitality workers are in short supply. I think that's it from me, Chair, other than one final thing to say, just to bear in mind that a naught percent increase in band D would actually be a five thousand, three hundred pound decrease in the precept. And that's it, Chair.
Thank you, Karen. The, I'll, we'll now go through the process I outlined earlier, so what I'll do now from the chair to give us a starting point is to, is to propose that the budget as, as is now, the eight point, the eight point six percent increase is what we agree, but we, and then I'll look for someone to second that. We won't vote for that, but we will then come for amendments to that. So I'll propose that. Councillor Brown is Chair of FNGP, will second that. So we've got the proposal for eight point six percent, the full budget.
Chair. Can I just, now, nine point four nine percent.
Oh, right.
After the Lewis District Council leaflet change.
Ah, sorry, let's try that again. So I'll propose nine point four nine percent. Councillor Brown will second that. So we have that as the, as this, as the substantive motion at the moment, but the amendments that will come up will then vary that and may become that substantive motion. So we now move to an open discussion. So councillors, if you want to speak, you come to the microphone, please. Given that time is, is precious here, the standing orders are that people can get to speak once on one item. I've been lax in the past in letting people speak twice on one item, but if we have lots of different items, you can speak many times, but not try to get what you want to say in one go rather than come back for several bites of it. So the floor is now open, my proposal would be that to call people to speak, to call no one to speak twice till everyone's spoken once. So who would like to open this? Okay, Chair, councillor Rutland.
First of all, a good evening, everyone. Karen, thank you for all your work on the figures, they look very comprehensive. I became a councillor because I care about the town and the people in it and I want to make a difference to where I live. I, and these are my personal feelings, I'm not an accountant and normally where accounts are concerned, I will listen to what an accountant advises me and say, that's your advice, let's follow it because it's good practice. But over the last twenty-four months, there's a lot of people who have gone through absolute hell, they've seen their income decimated. Personally, my income dropped eighty percent and the bills kept going up and they kept coming in. It used to cost me eighty quid to fill my car up with petrol, this morning it cost me a hundred and twenty-two pounds to fill my car up with fuel. So because so many other costs are going up in households everywhere, gas, electric, everything is going up out of proportion, the company I work for have sustained a seventeen percent increase in costs since October. For all of those reasons, I would actually say, can we have just a break this year and have a zero increase for everyone, just to give the town and the people in it a bit of breathing space? There's a lot more people using food banks, there's all sorts of things for it. So it's not a fiscal reason for doing it, it's not electioneering, it's not party politics or anything else, I'll leave all that to district level, but here at the town level, this is personal, it's very personal, it's about as personal as it gets. And I would actually just like a bit of a break from all of the rising costs all of the time. If we have to sacrifice something or move it to a later date or whatever, then I think that's the right thing to do because as councillors, we have a duty of care to do not only right fiscally, but also emotionally and supportively for the people in the town where we live. And for all of those reasons, and I know they don't make fiscal sense, but for all of those reasons, I would actually propose no increase in the precept this year, just to give us a break.
Okay, thank you councillor Rutland. Who else wants to speak?
Some of us have got, got together and tried to come up with things that we could reduce to, to zero. The things I would suggest from appendix three is the dishwasher, cooler and tables come from the earmarked reserve, I know that's not a huge amount. Reduce the grants to fifteen thousand, but, but keeping the cab five thousand, so the cab grant shouldn't be reduced. The salt CCTV, I've been assured can be of, paid for out of, out of a grant that one of the other councillors identified. The election costs moved to next year. The water station, again, to, to come out, the rainbow bench, South Barn, five thousand. The bin replacements, the fundraiser, the martello fence, the playground, the civic cost and the Cookmere signage. If the, we don't need to take out the martello loans, then we could, we could then replace fifty percent of the bins. Equally, if we start making a lot of, you know, profits, a lot, a lot more profits on the Gulf and the, and the, and the view, maybe we could use some of the money for some of the other projects and also try and obtain grants and sponsorship for some of the actual projects that we've got, like the rainbow bench, the martello water tower, you know, and things like that.
Okay, thank you councillor Payne. Councillor Haldane, do you?
Sorry, Chair, can I just clarify, are you inviting a proposal? Because obviously it'd be nice if what councillor, councillor Payne just made was the motion.
Councillor, not yet. What I'm asking is a, a general discussion and then to ask for amendments to come up.
Okay, I would rather speak with the amendments, I'll just, I'm just speaking one.
Ah, okay. So anyone else want to, councillor, right, there you go.
Thank you, Chair. I think councillors know my views on this, we've been various emails back and forth, but just so that everybody knows, I absolutely respect that councillors want to do the best they can for residents in the town. And that's an honourable thing to do and I absolutely agree with Jeff, you know, people need a break. But I have to say, I really don't think that nine pounds forty-six relief for a household over the period of a whole year is the kind of relief that people are looking for. If you, it's cost you a hundred and twenty pounds to fill your car up with petrol and it costs a family or a group of people in a house an extra nine pounds forty-six a year to provide them with some of the things we want to do for this town, it's something like nineteen p a week, I really don't think that's much to ask if you're having to pay those kind of things. Anyway, I work at the food bank and I know the number of people who are helped by the food bank and I see the situation that some people are in. We ought to have things in this town to support those people irrespective of whether we're putting up a precept by nine pounds forty-six in the year. I think that I would support the RFO's suggestion. I think what we're doing is responding to emotion here, we're trying to emotionally support people, but nine pounds forty-six doesn't emotionally support them or it doesn't actually physically support them. What we need to do is to actually be a bit bigger than that and say, look, if we're going to be a responsible council, we've got to be fiscally responsible and therefore in three years' time, we shouldn't be suddenly saying, oh, sorry, we made a reduction three years ago, but what we've got to do now is put the precept by, up by so and so because we didn't plan for it three years ago. So I think we still have to plan for the future and I think nine pounds forty-six or whatever it is, is not much to set a little bit by for the future so that we can help support people then with projects and actual, actually necessities like maintenance costs that might come in. So that's all I'd like to say, but I really don't think that we're asking for a huge increase here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Meek. Somebody's not spoken yet, councillor Honeymon, Olivia Honeymon?
I totally understand, I totally understand as well that there's issues, it's just, everything's just, this has just really been a really awful couple of years.
So can I just ask you to raise your mask just for a few minutes, it's a bit muffled.
I can't read through some, sorry, yes. It's been an awful couple of years and, yeah, it just has been. Our RFO has stated through section three in a report, pointing out the general reserves are low and if we don't increase to the recommended level highlighted for many years by the various auditors, then we could have a problem as the RFO has commented on the fact we had to go and ask for money. to go and ask for money from various sources. There is much uncertainty caused by the pandemic and its aftermath and other economic and international issues, if further situations arise which are not supported by any different schemes. The so-called cost of living crisis is not caused by the council tax of STC, it's the energy and income tax, national insurance rises and highs and that's causes, there's lots of other issues as well. Trying to get grants or sponsored would almost certainly need match funding. If projects are delayed or cancelled and they, if they need to restart in the future, then even more costs would be envisaged as penalties or extra costs would be envisaged. If we need to undertake repairs that come urgent again, they would have to come out of low levels of general reserves and most likely cost considerably more. I mean, as ourselves, we know that we have to household budget. So if you know something's going to go wrong, you try and make sure you've got some money put aside. Obviously, I know some people are in situations where, I heard a story the other day where somebody went to go with helping with the food bank, went to go and help take some, take some food to a particular family and that family literally had four slices of bread left. I can't imagine that situation. Our part of the overall Lewis District Council tax bill is around five percent of the overall total. And even now, we're at the lowest amount compared to neighboring towns. Our increase equates to 19p per week extra. Other councils like Lewis and East Sussex County Council, police and fires, are very likely to increase amounts by an inflation amount, if not more. We will have to pay this and could typically, typically add 100 to 150 pounds per year overall. This makes a potential rise of up to seven pounds per year from STC quite small. There is a scheme through Lewis District Council that those of working age can apply to the local council tax reduction scheme, which for the financially challenged will get the council tax reduced or eliminated entirely. Hopefully from next year, this will be more generous than what, which is already in place. There are existing schemes for those receiving different types of benefits. If we don't do anything this year, we'll have to increase more next year. That's been made by the figures that we've been given. And, you know, you know, I just think whatever we do is difficult, so.
Okay, thank you councillor Honeyman. Anybody who's not spoken yet? You've spoken, councillor Borman. And then.
Thank you, Chair. If we look at next year's precept, it's already a minus five percent. Will we put it down next year if we keep it at the increase of nine and a half percent this year? No, which means we can lower the precept this year. There are things that can come out of earmarked reserves, as Karen has said, there are things that can be funded through grants, there are things we can put on hold because they're not urgent. Yes, there are some things that we do need to keep in it, but we do need to think of the residents. Councillor Honeyman mentioned about the reduction scheme for council tax, but that's fine if you're on benefits, but low wage people that don't qualify for benefits, that are just above that, they're the ones that are going to pay. Because as you said, the Lewis District are looking at 100% reduction, so anyone on benefits will not have to pay council tax. So those people on low wages will be increased at every single level. Yes, we're only looking at Seaford Town, but we must be concerned about those residents that are earning just above that threshold to not qualify for benefits. This 19 pence a week that everyone goes on about will hit them, along with everything else that they're being hit with, left, right and centre. Their wages aren't going up, we need to keep it a naught percent, at least for this year. We've increased our council tax every single year. We can keep it as a zero percent or a very low percent for one year running for them. Thank you.
Councillor Halden Aggie, this is your second time, so even though the first one, you said you didn't want to say anything.
Thank you, Chair. Promise, this is, this is my only second time. I think as councillor Rutland said, we all got elected to do what we think is right for our town. We are all passionate for our town and we want to get results for a lovely town of Seaford. And I think that's quite important. I mean, I want to see the, the martello fields improved, I want to see playgrounds improved, I want to see wat, water parks everywhere. But these things cost money. And the last two years, last 18 months especially, been very difficult for everyone. People have lost their jobs, people have lost loved ones and people are struggling. And I think as councillor Honeyman said, someone, someone, people living on, having four slices of bread left. So there is poverty, even in our lovely town of Seaford. And it is, and, and I think we have a duty to our residents to show that empathy, to show that we actually care. And it's okay to say 19 pounds a week, doesn't, sorry, 19p a week doesn't matter. But when you're down, when you've got no job or when, or when you're struggling on minimum wage, every penny counts. Every penny makes a difference. If you have four slices of bread left in your house, that 19p means a lot to you. If you're struggling because you're trying to feed your child or trying to pay your eating bill, that matters to you. And, and, and I received an email last week from a resident wanting me to chase up a bail leave charge. She was in arrears with her council tax and the bail leave have gone round and they've charged her, I think 150 pounds. And she sent me something, I'll quote, I quote, she said, for, just didn't find my, she said, I quote, "Yesterday, I managed to put the kids to bed early for once and I had an extra half an hour space to myself, but I opted to go to bed early because it was cold downstairs and I could not afford to turn the heating on." And that's the reality for many of our residents. And if you cannot turn your heating on, if you've got four slices of bread, can you really afford to subsidize a cold water fountain or martello fields? Can you really afford to, to pay for 20 tables in the view when you, when you've got four slices of bread left in your, in your, in your front? To think about our residents and think what this means to them. We're not being financially prudent. What we're saying is let's make that tough choice of, let's manage our finance this year. Take that, just, just for once, the, the easiest option is to say, look, eight point nine, or nine point four percent increase, that's the easiest option. But I'm asking you tonight, don't take the easy option. Take the difficult decision of saying, okay, look, let's manage our finance. The same thing every, most households, most, most residents are doing now is managing their finance, let's manage ours as well. So I'm pleading with you, let's do something tonight to keep the council tax down to as low as possible. I would prefer a zero percent increase and let's make that happen.
Hey, thank you councillor. Someone else who's not spoken yet? I just want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity, councillor Edson, councillor Waraven.
Councillors, when I first joined this administration, we put the precept up by 13% because we'd kept it low the years before. And our town clerk said, we do this, we'll achieve what we set out to do and everything will be on key dory. Covid got in the way. The one thing we did do, we furloughed staff, nobody lost their jobs. This administration kept them people in work. What we're asking now, just stick it up by that a week. Now, I know people in difficulties, I know, I've been there, I understand that. But this budget will help us get over the hump. Hopefully Covid will go away and it won't knock us out like it did before. But sooner or later, we're going to be facing the fact, the people in this town want us to provide them with a decent place, facilities for leisure, et cetera, et cetera. And I just think that this budget will help do the trick. Hopefully next year, yes, it won't be so high. But I just look at that 20p and I think that's, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Waraven?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, all the years I've been councillor, I've never known a zero percentage, well, no increase at all. But then we haven't lived in extraordinary times like we have done in the last two years. And I've never been one who likes to have a high increase, you know, I've always been comfortable around the five percent. But I think a zero percentage will be a good message going out to our residents who are struggling. And like councillor Borman said, it's not the people who are probably under that borderline, it's the ones just over. And, and they're the ones who struggle. And, and when I had my business, I, I met them, you know, regularly each day when, when council taxes went up, gas went up and all this. They're the ones who really struggle. And I think when, you know, if you agree with the nine point four percent, that is what's going to hit the residents, they're going to say, oh, up nine point four percent for the town council, they won't look at it at 19 pence per week. And so I feel, you know, I've read and listened to all the councillors the last, last week with emails and everything. And I tend to make my mind up at the last, but I must say, I am swaying to the zero percent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you then councillor. Anyone else who's not spoken yet? I'm conscious councillor Rutland is asking to speak, oh, councillor Cash, then I'll give you, give councillor Rutland his second, second opportunity.
Knowing everyone in this room, I know there's not one of you sitting here who doesn't have empathy for the people we represent. It's an honour for all of us all to sit here tonight and be able to discuss what is best going to be for our communities. Well, for me, to be able to see children playing safely in the playground is important. What is that going to cost? A few pence. And I could go on through all of the things that people say we can cut and put an argument for them. So we all have empathy, we all care about the people living in poverty in our town. And I hope many of us, and I know many of you do, do work for food banks and like things to help our community. But in the end, we also have fiscal responsibility for our community. We cannot put our council in a position, if we have an emergency, for example, when our reserves are too small to meet those, we have got to be fiscally, fiscally responsible as well as having empathy. I think our team has done a brilliant job to bring in all that they've offered us for just over nine percent. I think it's a great credit to them. And I've heard councillors in other town who were very impressed by what has been put together for our council this evening. And it doesn't mean we don't care about our people that we're representing. It means that we have got to look in a way of being even in our response for it and not let sometimes our hearts rule our heads. And that's why I would support the budget and, and the precept that's been put before us tonight by our finance team.
Okay, thank you councillor Cash. Anyone else who's not spoken who wants to speak? No councillor, councillor Rutland, you're on again then.
Thank you. James, I have the greatest respect for you, I think you know that, and in fact for all of you. And while it's only 19p or whatever it is, to an extent, the amount is irrelevant. It's the psychological effect that that would have on people. You're absolutely right, people don't see the amount of pence or pounds or whatever, what they see is the percentage. And if they see that as, well, at least the town are trying to do something to give us a break this year, all right, we know we're saving up trouble for later on. When we were going through Covid, the, the government spent trillions of pounds running the furlough scheme and everything else. We all know that's a debt that's going to have to be paid somewhere down the line, but we were in a situation at the time where we needed it, so it happened. And all I'm asking for is to just, let's have a break for this year. It might only be a little bit, but it's the psychological effect that that has on people. If they hear zero percent, they see zero percent because we want to give you a break. There's lots of things we could spend it on, but we found other ways to do it in the budget, or we can put this back a bit, or we can do that a bit. That's financial responsibility and caring at the same time.
Okay, thank you. A comment I would, would want to make as a councillor rather than the chair or as a mayor, is that I think we have to hear what Karen said about good governance. And I think we've got to be careful that if we accept something less than the full, the full budget, we don't go down so far. There are some things we would be embarrassed about if we've got it wrong. And I think if we ignore the advice from the internal auditor and the RFO about putting 100,000 into reserves, that's a problem. If we make decisions, I mean, we have to take from the general fund because we've not made enough money available now, that's going to be a problem. And remember also that if we say the cut is zero, what we're actually saying is this year's budget again, but this year's budget again with increased costs because our staff will, our officers will get increments, they'll get cost of living rises, our suppliers will charge us more. So we end up with this, the money we got this year, but next year's costs. I think there's an issue about, I, I take, I fully understand the points being made about the difficulty people experience in the town. But I think we as a group of councillors have to be very careful that we don't take decisions here that will embarrass us in la, in later on if something happens, if there is a, an Omicron, Omega virus that closes the view or puts all our facilities out of use. We need to be careful, we haven't done anything at this point in time that causes a problem later on that gets all of us being interviewed by the monitoring officer in terms of why we've not followed best advice. So I'm not particularly proposing a particular amount, but just saying that I, I really think that zero is a risk for several reasons. And we, but we, I think I would like to hear perhaps from our RFO, what percentage will actually make, make sure that we've covered all of our responsibilities? There may be things that are, we would choose to do but won't be able to, but what would be the, what percentage do we have to have to make sure there's nothing that we've, are required to do that we won't be able to do? And while Karen's thinking about that, does anybody else want to say something? Okay, councillor Meek first. Are this, is this the same topics again? Yes, okay, councillor Cash, um. Sorry, who? Oh, you had your hand up. Oh, sorry. Okay, let's have councillor Brown first, he's not spoken yet. And then councillor Meek and then councillor Payne again.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thanks to Karen for the hard work that she's putting on to bring this budget into, into our attention. And I would like to support what councillor Meek was saying. I don't believe that we can survive on a zero percent increase this year. If we do that, we've got to increase the budget considerably next year to make up that shortfall. We're also in danger of not meeting our fiscal responsibilities as our auditor has already said to us that we have insufficient reserves. If we have an emergency in the town, it's going to cost us a lot of money and we have to dig into those reserves, we may find that we don't have enough money to cover it. So therefore, I, I cannot see that we can't have a zero percent increase. There are some minor savings that can be made in, in the budget at the moment. For instance, we could perhaps delay the water point on the martello towers and certainly the rainbow bench and a little bit of saving on the civic cost, which would reduce the, the budget by a small percentage. So maybe that's the direction that we should be going in. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown, now councillor Meek, you're on.
I respect everything that's been said. There's just one other thing I wanted to say was, we're talking, we're getting very exercised about the band D property. Band D is only one band, below band D, there's C, B and A, which it is likely that people with less money are occupying properties that are smaller and on a different banding. It doesn't, not exclusively so, but it's more likely that they will be actually on an even smaller increase because it grades down. So it might not be 19p, it might be 12p, I don't know. But what I'm trying to say is, I would, I've always suggested in the past, the majority of the people in Seaford, I would argue, can afford this increase of nine point four nine percent. There will be those people who can't, and that's where our empathy has to be lodged. But. But why should the majority of the people in Seaford forfeit the improvements that they want to see in the town for the minority, that I would suggest it is a minority, who will feel that? And what we should be doing is to be supporting our charities and our foundations to make sure that there is a buffer, if there is not the support at Lewis, that the relief from council tax would help. So I'm suggesting that the majority of people in the Seaford can afford this. Obviously, people in much bigger properties on a higher rate will presumably not feel it so much either. That's what I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Payne. And I think we're fairly close to being able to take some amendments now, so.
I've got a few points. First one, we keep talking about the reserves. All we're saying is taking out the reserves of the hundredth per thousand is eight thousand seven hundred. So we're still putting ninety one thousand into reserves. And then next year, we've got down thirty, so we've put thirty seven down. You know, I can't see the auditor's going to throw a fit for that. The second thing is, you know, we keep saying, oh, it's only nineteen p, but it's nine point eight. Sam and I did, had to go round knocking on doors when we got elected this year. Everybody talked about Seaford is too expensive. Everybody. Nobody talked about climate change, they didn't want to talk about anything apart from the toilets and this. This is what they see. Thirdly, we're saying, oh, but it's only a little bit of the council tax, does it really make a difference? Well, how much difference does the climate change make to the world that we do? So should we stop that because it makes little difference? No. We shouldn't be, we should be going, we can make a little bit of difference. People can see we're making a little bit of difference. So therefore, we can do it. And they can actually go, actually, yeah, the council are supporting us this year.
Okay, thank you. Karen, my earlier question about is there a percentage that would enable us to discharge our good governance duties?
Thank you, Chair. The thing that I would say is that it's worth looking at the list with what I said and look at, do we need to have it? Or would it be nice to have it? Like, for instance, it might be nice to have a bench. This is my perspective and a financial perspective. My job is to make sure that the council's reserves are robust and that they will be fit for purpose for the next however many years that the council exists, long after we've left. So I think looking at the list, line by line, and say, actually, we don't need a rainbow bench, that could wait. But actually, we do need to save for our playgrounds. We do need to have money that we can repair our fences. So, you know, maybe some of the nice to haves can actually later in the year come out of grants that might appear, they might be able to come out of SELL. At the moment, that's not known and it's not possible. You know, but it might be later on in the year. But I think that's the thing is, look at what we need to have to have good corporate governance, and take out the ones that we don't need to have, including the earmarked reserves. I would definitely recommend the equipment coming out of the earmarked reserves.
Okay, thank you. Now, we've been going at this for fifty minutes now, I'd like to hope an hour will be enough. Now, I think it's time to put some amendments down on the table. So I think if we could frame it as an amendment in terms, now I'm conscious, I've seen numbers of emails floating around this week arguing, debating different things. Now, I think we've got to be careful. If we put an amendment for a percentage, different people may expect different things not to be done or to be done. I think we're going to have to, if you want to talk about percentages rather than identifying particular projects off the list, we need to be clear that what you're asking to be voted not to be done, we're all clear what, we've got the same list in our heads. Does that make sense? Right, I think we're ready to move to resolutions. I think you can then, Bill Payne can, sorry. You're asking questions to me, by the way.
Okay, two, yes, yes, okay. Three items, dishwasher for the View. The View makes a loss of over a hundred thousand pounds a year. Anyone who runs a business, and we have got people who run businesses, yeah, you've got your business, if you have your business and your business is making you a hundred thousand pounds loss, you look at ways to keep your costs down. I own pubs, and I still do, and we can do without a dishwasher, apart from maybe, we find ways to, we've done it during Covid when we didn't have the resource. And I'm asking, so therefore, my question is, is it possible for a loss-making business, for us to look at ways of managing that for the time, or some of these costs for the time being, rather than asking the time?
Yeah, I think councillor, the RFO has already said this could be paid for from the earmarked reserves.
No, but I don't want to use the earmarked reserves either.
And also, we're in a position where, as a commercial enterprise, things have to be done safely and we can't expect staff to do all the washing up by hand. Karen, that was addressed. I think, yes, I think it's the safe thing to do. If the View is to keep running, we need the equipment and the earmarked reserve could pay for it. Yes, if anybody wants, I think we go for amendments now. Yes? And I think what we need to do with amendments is we need to get them written down by an officer so we can all be clear of what the amendment is.
Right, I produced a document, which is amendment to appendix three, that we save ninety four thousand two hundred, which I think everybody's got a copy of. I would like to make that as the amendment to the appendix three and put forward for a zero per cent precept increase.
So just to be clear, your proposal is for a zero per cent precept.
Using these savings.
And the appendix three paper that's been circulated removes, is that removing ninety four thousand two hundred from the budget?
Yes.
I don't think this matters too much, but the amount of saving required for naught per cent is ninety two thousand eight hundred. So ninety four thousand two hundred is very slightly over it. So it would actually have an effect of having a precept of minus naught point one four per cent rather than zero. Just to be clear about that. Thank you. It's zero to the nearest number, Jeff, but I don't want there to be any misunderstandings.
Bits and pieces.
Oh, I think having deficit budgets is. So I think to get a resolution, an amendment from this, so what you're saying is zero per cent and to use the items on that list you've circulated to get to the zero per cent?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's one. Who's seconding that? Sam's seconding that. Okay, is there another amendment to put? Any other amendments?
Chair, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Just quickly, going down what we've just said, going down the list. Again, this is just my opinion. But looking at it on a perspective of nice to have and need to have, there's at least fifty five thousand pounds worth of savings that could be made. I'm happy to run through what I've written down. That comes out at two point nine six per cent.
I think if we, yeah, I'd pick up Karen's offer to run through fifty five thousand that could be made, I think relatively easily, is that right?
If we took five thousand pound out of civic other and we didn't do anything with the mayor's chain this year, again, you might want to reduce that amount. Five hundred pounds from the mayor's expenses, fifteen thousand pounds for the bins, one thousand for the rainbow bench, fifteen thousand from the water refill station, five thousand for the signage at Cookmore Haven, five thousand for the professional fees for South Hill Barn, four thousand five hundred, two thousand and two thousand two hundred for earmarked reserves for the Golf and the View. That totals fifty five thousand two hundred.
And that would be what percentage then?
That works out at two point nine six per cent, three pound and eight p.
Okay, you've heard what the RFO is suggesting is possible. Would someone like to propose that? That the, that would propose, that would be a budget of an increase of two point nine six per cent and a reduction of fifty five thousand for what was in the budget already? Anyone want to propose that? Councillor Honeyman?
Thank you, Chair. I couldn't hardly hear the RFO and I was very, very confused what you were trying to do. And just point of order, every amendment, I'd like a recorded vote for every item which gets changed. So I'm looking forward to a recorded vote for every item. Every amendment, even one bit, if it was to remove the rainbow bench, for example, one thousand pounds all the way around to, so we know where we are and we can, and I think it'll make it clearer for everyone. But to be honest, I couldn't hear you Karen, sorry.
The amendments are being presented with, what have been proposed are budgets. So each of the amendments has a proposed budget. So what's been described is either the budget as, the three amendments we have so far, three motions, three amendments we have so far, is the budget as presented, as Karen has explained this evening, the savings of up to ninety four thousand two hundred as presented on the additional sheet of paper, or the list that Karen has just described to achieve a two point nine six per cent rise. I think councillors are clear on those three. We will take a recorded vote for each of those three amendments plus any others that are put forward. Thank you.
So do any councillors want, councillor Honeyman?
I'm sorry, Chair, I'm still unclear about the last item. I'm very confused on that sheet, I want to know what your intentions are, I'm sorry Karen.
Okay, so I think Karen, could you just read the list again?
It's a point of order for clarity, there's nothing on the wall or anything.
Can you just read the list of what you're proposing?
If you can raise your voice, that'd be a bit more useful.
I will do, sorry.
I think if we can refer to this big list. And read through that list, Karen will direct you to that list.
Yes. I will.
Jean is suggesting we could do it by committee, but I think we'd best go through the list because the. Yeah, I think if we could follow it just down the pages as we go through.
I'm happy, Chair, to say which committee it is in the beginning.
Yes, yes.
So F and GP committee, civic other, mayor's chain, we could reduce by five thousand pounds, this is the amount that is in there for refurbishment of the chain, the collar and the box. These items could be put back to another year, to next year. Mayor's expenses, line seven, four one eight one, I actually don't think you've got line numbers on your sheet. Four one eight one, mayor's expenses, reduce the mayor's expenditure budget down to a thousand pounds, so save five hundred. This is what it is this year, we reduced it because of Covid last year. Community services committee, seafront development plan, instead of replacing the bins, we renovate the bins, so we save fifteen thousand pounds, sorry. Four two seven six, rainbow bench, saving a thousand pounds. Project expenditure, four two seven seven, water refill station, saving fifteen thousand pounds. Again, this is something that might be able to be done, but we can take it out of the budget, still knowing it's there, it's something that members have expressed a wish to have done, if we gets enough SELL money, if we can get a SELL grant, if like the other proposal that members have said, we don't need a loan for the Martello toilets, those sort of things could go towards that. Project expenditure, four two seven six, signage for Cookmore Haven, five thousand pounds. Four four two four, South Hill Barn development, professional costs to develop the plan, five thousand pounds. That's it for community services. Golf and the View, four two seven two, equipment purchase, dishwasher, cellar cooler, outdoor tables, all to be met from earmarked reserves. Four thousand five hundred, two thousand, two thousand two hundred. And the total comes to five thousand two hundred. I'm just going to ask a question, fifty five thousand two hundred, I'm just going to ask a question of my colleague Lucy, because I've done this on the computer very quickly. Yep. That makes fifty five thousand two hundred pounds worth of savings.
Yes, councillor Cash?
Can I particularly look at the savings on the bins on the seafront? Which is, what, twenty thousand?
Replacement of the bins was twenty thousand, but if we actually refurbished them instead, it would be five thousand.
If there's one thing that everyone in Seaford does, it is to walk along our seafront. If there's anything that anyone who comes to Seaford does, the visitors, they walk along the seafront. If you walk along our seafront, that is the view of Seaford the world has. Those bins are disgusting. They don't do their job, they leak with people putting liquids in when they shouldn't. They really do diminish that beautiful facility we have, three miles of beach. I would be very reluctant to see that go. If you're going to refurbish what there is now, they are pretty awful. It's like painting over rotten wood. I would be really against losing that. Our seafront is the view of Seaford of the world. And I don't want to save pence and lose that beautiful seafront that we've got. We've tried to increase how it looks to the world. We've got plans from local groups like Keith has spoken to about, and I know he's been very involved himself in improving the seafront facilities. To, for the sake of the amount of money we'd save on this, I think that would be a great shame. As for the rest of it, I am quite happy with, but I would seriously hope that we would take that out of this proposed saving.
So can I just check, that would make the reduction by forty thousand rather than fifty five thousand? And what will that percentage be? Okay, working on that one.
The percentage would then be four point four nine or four pounds sixty seven. So that's a nine pence increase per week in band D. But less than that, as councillor Meek said, for three more bands.
So at the moment, there's a substantive motion, an amendment, and the opportunity to save forty thousand with a four point four nine per cent increase, we'd need a councillor to propose another one to second it. Would anybody want to propose the four point four nine and the saving of forty thousand? Yeah, that, keep the bins in. So councillor Cash proposes that. Someone second councillor Cash for that? Councillor Meek. So we now have, just to check, no one wants to make another resolution or an alternative resolution? Yeah, councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's right that we should look at some savings and having looked at the list that I've got in front of me, I'd like to propose that the following four items are taken out of the budget. The Martello water station to be delayed for a year. The rainbow bench to be put out to sponsorship. The Seaford Town Council protocol on benches is that people buy the benches and then we take them, we site them on the seafront and we maintain them, but we do not as a rule buy benches for any organisation within the town. So I think that could come out quite easily. I think the fundraiser could also be taken out at the moment because I think that probably we've got enough sufficient expertise within the council to take up that role in the short term. And the civic cost could also be reduced by four thousand by delaying the repairs on the mayor's chain at the moment. I'd also like to put forward, instead of decreasing the grants budget, we increase it by five thousand to twenty thousand. There are a lot of organisations in this town at the moment that are really struggling and they need our support and help. Thank you.
So the total, so the total would be reducing the original budget by, what's it? Four thousand, a thousand, fifteen thousand, three thousand, and putting ten thousand back in, is that right?
Five thousand back in, so it's eighteen thousand pounds worth of savings that makes.
And eighteen, so an eighteen thousand saving off the budget as proposed, what's that as a percentage?
Eight, actually. Six point seven six, three point, seven point zero three pounds.
So that's a six point seven percent, that brings it back to a six point seven percent increase, yeah. So councillor Brown's proposed that. Someone second it?
Can I just withdraw mine and say that I would support councillor Brown?
Okay, so councillor Cash is now moving to support councillor Brown's, that's proposed and seconded.
So the other ones withdrawn?
So now we have, is it two on the, three on the table? We've got the original motion and then two amendments. All right with that. And the amendments are zero and what was the second percentage? Sorry, six point seven six. Right, so the original, which is full, zero and six point seven six. Okay, and there's no other proposals to go with that. Now, given that it's not possible to vote for both of these, I think, or is it? If we bring one amendment up, is it possible, Clark, to vote for both amendments or one or the other?
Chair, I would suggest that you start at the highest number. If it's not passed, you go down to the next one.
And the point is that people can vote?
Yes.
Actually, it's not. I read the standing orders today. It's the Chair. I do, I've got a copy in front, I've got a copy in front of me. It's definitely the Chair's choice on that. But it's still a question, can people vote more than once? Yes, looks like it. Yes.
Because, yes. Yeah, exactly. That's exactly it. So.
So, okay, we start?
So the motion in effect is to discuss the budgets presented in a precept and corresponding band D council tax for twenty two, twenty three. And then I would probably say something like namely, and then the first one would be the budget presented to the meeting with a percentage rise of, is it nine? Was it nine? What was the first one?
Yeah, that's nine point four nine.
Nine point. What is it?
Nine point four nine.
Nine point four nine percent.
But I also think we have to take amendments before we come back to the main motion. I'm sorry, I'm looking to the clerk for guidance on this, Karen.
Can I, can I just mention something Chair about the amounts from earmarked reserves? I get the feeling, again, I could be wrong, that it might be worth taking that as a proposal first, then that takes that out of the equation. Because if everybody agreed to take that out of earmarked reserves, that's sort of a new starting place, if you know what I mean? Because I'm not, I don't think, certainly councillor Brown didn't mention that in his proposal. And the, what came from F and G P, it wasn't in that proposal either. So if that's something that members would like, I think that needs proposing first.
Okay, so the first move would be to take the items for, the capital items for the view from the earmarked reserve. That needs a separate, a separate proposal. Yes? Yeah, I think councillor, what we'll do is to take a separate vote on whether the earmarked reserve will be used for the capital items for the view. And then the other amendments can be revised to take account of that.
I do understand what you mean. I would recommend that you take the earmarked reserve as a proposal first, what you're going to spend from earmarked reserves. That will come out then, I think I said eight point six percent. And then the proposal, the motion would be changed to eight point six percent instead of nine point four percent. If that is, if that's carried, as you say, then it's carried. If it's not carried, then you go to the next motion. And then, yes, of course, everybody can vote again.
Okay, so that's what I propose that we do, that we look for someone to propose and second that the capital equipment needed by the view is taken from the earmarked reserves. Councillor Payne, you're proposing that? And someone second that? Yes. Okay, so those in favour of doing that? Okay, thank you, that's done. Okay, so that item is now, that amount is out of all the other, out of all the amendments. It's been taken care of in the budget, not in the precept. So that's, okay, we've parked that. The, I think in terms of councillor Brown being able to propose the amendment, you'd have to withdraw to second, from seconding the first motion. Yeah. I think I would be content for you as the person seconding my proposal to do that. So do you want to withdraw from the full budget proposal? Yeah, sorry. You've seconded my proposal that the full budget at nine point four nine percent is what we vote on. But you've come up with an amendment of something different to that. Yes, but the amendment is different to the proposal then, I think. I think we need to get to the, we need to vote on the amendment.
I think Chair, you probably need to propose again the new eight point six percent and get another second up.
Right, you're content for that. Right, let's clear that one then. So the, sorry. Well, my nightmare scenario tonight was a whole series of casting votes. We haven't got there yet. So, so the, if we go back to what, how I opened this section of the agenda, saying that the, my proposal is that the full budget at nine point four nine percent.
Eight point six percent.
Right, that we, that the full budget at eight percent is what we vote on. But we won't go there unless we've got, unless the other, and any of the amendments fail. So I propose eight point six. Someone second that? Councillor Meek, right, let's propose. Okay, we've got the substantive motion back in place. Now we start on going through the amendments. Clark, which order do you think we should take the amendments in? We've got an amendment of, the two percentages we've got are zero and is it four point four nine?
So the six point seven six is changed now, is it?
Okay, I think this is going to be slightly tweaked because of the earmarked reserves.
Because we've included the few changes.
Yeah, I don't know which way it'll work. I think that, I'm inclined to go lodges first. So what do you think that percentage?
Still six point seven six percent Chair. Can I just clarify that, just to explain, that the changing of your proposal, you actually haven't changed the precept, not, sorry, you haven't changed the budget. The budget, the budget requirement is the same. So you've just changed how it affects the precept. Yes?
Yeah, okay.
And it's still councillor Brown's proposal. I'll just, shall I go through it again, what councillor Brown's saying?
Yes, yes.
Here councillor Brown would like to see four thousand pounds removed from the Civic Other. I am assuming councillor Brown, but you can correct me, that you think that the thousand pound we keep in there is for the collar and the box. Councillor Brown would also like to see, rather than decrease the grants budget, he would like to see it increased by another five thousand pounds. He would like to see a thousand pounds removed for the Rainbow Bench, fifteen thousand pounds removed for the Water Refill Station, and three thousand pounds removed to engage a professional fundraiser to help with the projects such as the Sports Academy, the South Hill Barn and the Salts Development Plan. The total of that comes to eighteen thousand pounds.
And the percentage that would give us?
With the eight thousand seven hundred already taken from earmarked reserves, if we take eighteen thousand pounds off the budgets as well, it comes out at six point seven six percent, seven pounds and three p. Hundred and eleven pounds and nine pence a year on band D. Do you want to know the precept Chair?
Yes.
One million forty four nine six five.
Okay, thank you. So I think we'll go in that order. Let's start with the councillor Brown seconded by, who seconded this one? Councillor Meek. Okay, let's put that to the vote first. So we've, it's.
Does councillor Henry want a recorded vote?
Oh, sorry, recorded votes, sorry, yes.
So we're going to go recorded.
Okay, we're going to go alphabetical order, recorded, so.
So I've got the list here councillor Eas, shall I call them in turn?
If you'd indicate yes, or, yeah, I think indicate yes, if you're, if you are voting in favour of this amendment.
Are we all clear on what we're doing before I start? Councillor Meek's waving. Yeah, who's seconded the three motions, do we know?
Let's check the offices, what's recorded. So let's go, let's work through the list. Let's work out who's proposed and seconded for what. So who's proposed and seconded the four point, the four pounds sixty seven? That was councillor Brown and councillor Meek, is that right? Councillor Cash.
She's withdrawn that one, Rodney.
Okay, so councillor Brown, councillor Cash. Right, the, that's two. The other one was the zero percent.
Yeah.
And that was?
Councillor Payne, councillor Adeniji. So actually councillor Meek hasn't seconded too.
Sorry?
That's right, it's fine then.
Who, so just.
Brown, then Cash, then we've got Payne and Adeniji, and then you and Meek. So those are the six.
Yeah, okay.
So it's fine. Sorry councillor Meek, if you confused you there.
Yeah, right, okay. So can you just read the first amendment that's being put?
Okay, so the first amendment is to set the precept and corresponding band D with a showing a rise of six point seven six percent or seven pounds and three pence for a total precept of one zero four four nine six one. Sorry, nine six five.
Okay, roll call for that then.
Okay, so we're going to do this as a recorded vote. Everyone happy with that? So I'll go down the list in alphabetical order. So councillor Adeniji against, thank you. Councillor Adil. Councillor Argent. Sorry, was that four? Thank you. Councillor Borman. Councillor Brown. Councillor Cash. Councillor Edson. Councillor Mohammed Ali Hader. Councillor Renimeh Hader. Councillor Richard Honeyman. Councillor Olivia Honeyman. Councillor Meek. Councillor Payne. Councillor Reed.
I would vote for, but I've also proposed the first motion. Can I vote, I can vote twice, I vote for it.
Councillor Rutland. Councillor Waraven. That's it. So I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, one, two, three, four. I've got ten, four, and one, two, three, four. I've got six against, so that is passed.
So that amendment is carried. That then becomes the substantive motion then. So there's, so on that basis, there's no opportunity to present the nought percent then? No. So the outcome of all that is that we now have a budget, a precept, sorry, and the increase we're agreeing is. Just to make sure what we're saying, we've now agreed to every street.
So what's just, can you say it again Karen, what the numbers, final numbers are? Just so we're all absolutely clear.
The precept would be one million forty four thousand nine hundred and sixty five. The band D council tax would be one hundred and eleven pounds and nine p. The council tax increase would be six point seven six percent. And the council tax increase for a band D property would be seven pounds and three p.
Thank you. Thank you Karen.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the end of agenda, item eleven.
Sorry, sorry Chair, we've also got to do the second motion, which is to note the projected budgets for the following year.
Ah, sorry.
Sorry Chair.
Yeah, okay, let's go back, we'll go back to the recommendations. To discuss the budgets presented, right, we're on page thirty three, to discuss the budgets presented in set of precept and corresponding band D council tax that we've just done. We are now asked to note the projected budgets for the years twenty twenty, twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six, twenty six, twenty seven. Does anyone want to discuss this one if we move to a, move to a vote on this? Does anybody want to discuss it? Someone proposed recommendation two for me?
Someone proposed it. We note the other budget.
So do you want to, so this is to note the projected budgets for the years.
Eleven point two.
So we're on page, is it eleven point two on page thirty three? That's the second part.
Thank you councillor Borman.
Right councillor Borman.
Second that, councillor Brown seconded it.
Councillor Brown, those in favour, eleven two. Great, thank you.
Thank you everyone.
That was, that's agenda item eleven. Agenda item twelve is the review of, is the financial regulations review. The full council's recommended to adopt the revised financial regulations as presented in report one fifty three twenty one, with any necessary corrections to page numbers. Karen, do you have anything to say in presenting this?
Yes Chair, it's a requirement that we review the financial regulations every year. There's only two amendments. The first one is just updating the figures that are contained within the financial regulations. And the second one is adding the delegated power that already existed. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody's got any.
So we're now on page sixty two, sixty three, up to eighty three. Any questions in the report or for what our RFOs just said to us? No, I don't see anybody say. Right, so would someone like to propose that we adopt the revised financial regulations as we presented in report one fifty three twenty one with any necessary corrections to page numbers? Councillor Cash, someone second that? Councillor Brown, all those in favour? That's carried. We're going to, item thirteen, we're on page eighty five now. This is to present the review of the town council earmarked reserves. And we're recommended to note the report and advise the RFO of any changes required. Karen, do you want to present anything introducing this?
Yes Chair, just like to say that again, this is an item to do with transparency, good corporate governance. Earmarked reserves are supposed to be reviewed according to the financial regulations twice a year, which we do. In theory, we review them a lot more often than that, at least once a month. But twice a year, we bring them to councillors. Last year, as you were aware, I actually earmarked underspends on certain budgets. That has enabled us tonight to be able to reduce the precept by eight thousand seven hundred pounds, so that we can spend the equipment from that budget, from that earmarked reserve, sorry. So I propose to do the same thing again next year, but as a, at the end of twenty twenty two, March twenty twenty two. So what the report is just showing you basically of the types of reserves that we're hoping to create in the future, again, to make the finances of the council robust and sound that they can meet all future liabilities. If we do this process every year, I think it is really good policy to have a cap on the reserves, so that at the end of the year, say for instance, we didn't spend anything on a reserve and there was a substantial amount to go into it. We don't want to build up the reserves forever, we just want to build them up to our requirements. So I and other officers have looked at this and we've put a maximum balance on there. My only question, would anybody think that they should be changed? This will be brought to you again after the year end, after surpluses have been earmarked and the balances and the maximum balances will be there again. And we'll review them every year. That's it Chair, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. The floor is open to questions, comments. I think everyone's been worn out by the budget process. So, okay, so will, someone, would someone propose this then, that the full council's recommended to note the report and advise the RFO of any changes? Councillor Meek, councillor, I'm brain dead at this point, Edson, sorry. I could probably tell you tomorrow what I had for breakfast three days ago. Okay, so that's proposed and seconded, those in favour? Okay, any. Okay, any abstaining, any against? One abstention, one abstention. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we go to item 14, we're on page 90. This is between pages 90 and 103. This is brought forward by Lucy. It's to the full council recommended to note the internal auditor's report. Lucy, do you want to say anything in introducing this or Karen?
I'm happy to introduce it, Chair. The internal report is just for noting, there was only one recommendation. Basically that the website needed updating with the transparency figures. Again, I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Signal if you want to ask a question or make a comment. Don't see anybody. Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to thank the finance manager for the work that's gone into this report and the way that the audit's been carried out. We're in a very good position at the moment as far as the audit's concerned, which is very, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? On the basis of how I've made the comment, councillor Brown, do you like to propose this? That we note the internal auditor's report? You propose that? Someone second it? Councillor Rutland, those in favour? That's carried. Okay, we're now across to item 15. And we're on page 104, it's between pages 104 and 142. This is the Salts Tennis Court SIL grant application. Council recommended note the contents of the report, authorised the completion of the committee infrastructure levy grant agreement between Lewis District Council and the town council for the Salts Tennis Courts refurbishment project. Tony Jackson's listed as the officer bringing this forward. Tony, do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully the report's pretty straightforward. Officers worked extremely hard to secure £60,000 from Lewis District Council. To release the funds, the grant agreement needs to be executed with a legal deed. For the legal deed to be executed, it needs to be authorised by a resolution, which I'd like the councillors to do, please. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I think the report is very clear and shows what's needed and why it's needed. Anyone with any questions or comments to Tony on the report or about the tennis courts? It's actually good to see the building underway down there, work underway.
Yeah, doing really well.
It's interesting to see in some Facebook posts, they were worried that the tennis courts were going to get converted to something else. And we're going to have a tennis court. And I couldn't work out what a mupper was, so it was a multi-purpose...
A multi-use games area, a mugger.
Mugger, that's a... Should I do read the reports all the way through? It did take a while to work that out. So anyone with any questions to Tony? Questions, comments? Okay, so the full council recommended to, one, note the contents of the report, and two, to authorise the completion of the CIL grant application between Lewis District Council and the town council for the Salts Tennis Courts refurbishment projects. Someone propose that? We take the two together, sorry. Councillor Borman, that's somebody other than councillor Rutland, councillor Honeyman, Olivia Honeyman. Okay, those in favour? Okay, that's carried, thank you. Okay, we're now on to 16. Policies for the new Salts Tennis Courts activities. We're between pages 144 and 172. The council's recommended to adopt the safeguarding policy, tennis as presented within the report 16021. To adopt the diversity and inclusion policy for tennis as presented with report 16021. And to note the arrangements with the town council's welfare officer responsibilities. This is listed as a report by Georgia. Town clerk will speak to it.
Thank you. I think, Chair, your introduction's almost covered it, to be honest with you. As the report makes clear, as part of our tennis court work, we are required to really have all the necessary policies and frameworks in place for the new courts to operate appropriately and successfully. And specifically, the expert advice, as you've seen within the report, requires us to take three steps: adopt a safeguarding policy, adopt a diversity and inclusion policy, and also make sure we have responsibilities in place to cover welfare officer responsibilities. So councillors are asked to endorse those three things as part of the implementation of the tennis court development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to ask questions about this? I understand that Tony Jackson's becoming the welfare officer or whatever the new title is.
Absolutely.
So anybody, any questions, comments? Basically, it's adopting three policies, so... Okay, so we're recommended to adopt the safeguarding policy for tennis as presented with the report, to adopt the diversity and inclusion policy for tennis as presented with the report, and to note the arrangements for the town council's welfare officer's responsibilities. Someone propose that for me? Councillor Warraven? No, councillor Rutland won't put his hand up anymore. Okay, well, sorry. Councillor, remember, I'm a little higher, sorry about that. Okay, that's proposed and seconded, those in favour? Okay, that's carried, thank you. Now, we come to item 17, pages, between pages 174 and 184. A review of the strategic plan. And this report, the council's recommended to note the report and to confirm or amend the relevant updates to the plan in this report. Town clerk for this one, and perhaps a little bit of history how we got to this point?
Yes, I think I've covered that. Sorry, I sounded loud with that, I'm so sorry. But yeah, I think I've covered this within the report, as to the context for this. As part of taking forward the planning process for the council, looking to the future, it's really important that we record and reflect upon what's been achieved against the existing strategic plan that was originally devised in 2015 and reviewed in 2018. And therefore, for councillors to be able to do that, a little while ago, I circulated to councillors the complete plan with an update against each of the 48 objectives in terms of what's been achieved and what work was being taken forward. And I asked councillors for feedback. I'm very grateful for the feedback that I received and the points that were raised were taken on board and two of the objectives were further updated. What's presented to you now is the complete list of effectively 48 updates against that old strategic plan, confirming what we've done and what work we're taking forward, which will then inform our planning process going forward. And the final point to make, as I've said within the report, we'll also use this paper that's proposed tonight, plus the budget that has been passed tonight, to put on our website a list of the key work we're undertaking in 2022 so all the citizens in Seaford can see what their town council is doing. Happy to take any questions or comments, thank you.
Councillor Warraven?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's just a question about the Buckle Car Park. Is there any ongoing talks with LDC?
Which one, sorry councillor Warraven?
S04/3 on page 183, Buckle Car Park.
Yes, we are, yes, we are, yeah, there is liaison with LDC about what we need to do to keep the protection in place.
Yeah, because I think it's important that we keep that. Thank you.
No problem, thanks councillor Warraven.
Okay, anyone else with questions or comments? Okay, we now move to the recommendation. The council recommended to note the report and confirm or amend the relevant updates on the plan in this report. Someone like to propose this? Thank you. Councillor Rutland, seconded by councillor Borman. Those in favour? Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Now, we're nearly at nine o'clock, so I'm just wondering about taking a comfort break. We've got one, two, we've got three or five items left.
Why don't we stop then?
I think we stop here, five minute break. And... Please stay on this side of the road. The agenda 18. Okay, we're on page 186, between 186 and 194. This is the overview of events on the town council's open spaces. We're recommended to note the report, consider any key findings for future planning events. To note the 2022-23 higher fees as presented within the report 15821. That these may subject to change as a result of decisions made on the option to tax building exempt report elsewhere. So this is presented by Sharon, who wants to talk to this? Tony?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's a great report Sharon's done. I think it's really self-explanatory. If anybody's got any questions, then fire away.
Anybody have a question? I can ask a question. In the calendar for this year, there will be the Queen's Platinum Jubilee and Coral Weekend early in June. So is that... Thank you. 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 Thank you.[567.12]